I know, see, Councilmember Bingo's laughing.
You told a joke, it was good.
Okay, I've got lots of them. So, welcome, everybody, to the March 3 study session of Spokane City Council. I'm filling in for Council President. I am Lori Kinnear, Council President Pro Tem. And although Council President, we can see him, he is indeed not among us. So, I'm going to fill in for him today. Going to turn the...looking for some of our...oh, Nate is with us. So, we have two things on our agenda today. One is the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. I'm going to save that for last. We have a special guest today, who is Nate. And Nate, you pronounce your name Lichty?
Lichty.
Lichty, okay. He is with the Washington Department of Commerce. We were going to talk about the Commerce Rapid Capital Acquisition Program today. And the reason...here comes Hannah Lee. The reason we're going to talk about that is because we have an opportunity to learn more about it. When funds become available, we can then apply for these funds and actually be competitive...oh, there I am. And actually be competitive. So, Nate, I'm going to turn it over to you. Could you give us a little background about what the funds are, what they do, what they're supposed to be used for? And we have some of our folks from CHHS here, too, to listen. Eric Finch, I would encourage you to ask questions as well, because when we're ready to apply, I want to be first in line. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Nate.
Great. It's a pleasure to be here with you remotely. I look forward to visiting in your fair city and actually touring the projects that we fund in your area and meet with you. But maybe we're entering that phase where we're going to get the opportunity to do that. I'm Nate Lichty. I've been with Commerce for about 18 months. I moved here from Indianapolis during the pandemic. And moved here in part because the state does really amazing things in affordable housing. And that's been my career trajectory. I've worked in community development and affordable housing for 20-plus years. And really have a passion for this work. So, we are...and greetings from Director Brown, who is a good friend of probably many of you and a really strong advocate for First Spokane and the region across Commerce's programs. So, I have a PowerPoint presentation. I want to be sensitive to your timing. Is a 15-minute kind of overview, okay, and then discussion?
Sure, we've allowed 30 minutes.
Okay, I want to make sure...please, let's make this very conversational. So, the Rapid Capital Housing Program was established last year in the capital budget. Do you see my screen?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So, 120 million of the capital budget went for Rapid Capital Housing. And so, we worked hard at implementing that. It was clearly that it was to create new housing units to serve the unsheltered, homeless population, to be used primarily for acquisition, although it allowed for some renovations to be conducted. And it was to model after California program, Project Home Key. And so, we had 93 million of that. Seventeen or 27 million of it was directly appropriated to specific projects. We had about 93 million that we were to administer. So, we set up the program and we set it up with three phases in mind. Phase one was acquisition only, wanted to deal with those projects that could move very, very quickly to acquisition. And we funded five projects in the first round. Phase two allowed for modifications to be made in the housing. And we awarded 10 projects in that round. And at that point, we fully committed all of the funds, the $93 million in funds. We had one application from Spokane in phase one, but it included too much rehab in order for it to qualify for phase one. And then, we didn't...we weren't able to...we didn't see it in phase two. So, a little bit of our disappointment, probably on your part, too. But phase three, there were a lot of projects that had more substantial renovation and were waiting for phase three. But I'm going to spend more time talking about the 2022 supplemental budget, because, as you can tell, we expended all of the funds. We achieved the legislative intent with some criticisms that I'll point out also. So, as you said, a traditional housing trust fund application, we have a 90...the statutory reforming is a 90-day NOFA period, an application period. So, we usually open it in June, accept applications in September, and then fund projects in December. So, what you can see here is this was illustrated of the second round. We opened it in September, closed it, and funded within 90 days approximately. Organizations then had 45 days to do their due diligence, and then we went to contract within 45 days. So, it was a very truncated process. And one of the reasons that we did acquisition-only and modest renovation is the renovation and the compliance around renovation is what extends the period from contracting to move-in. And so, making it very focused on acquisition. And now, one of the provisos, one of the requirements was that it create new units, which meant we weren't buying occupied housing. We were buying...this is where hotels and motels suited fairly well. But we also wanted to achieve a level of permanency and not just increasing shelter capacity because of the operating costs. And when people move into shelters, they're still technically homeless. They're going to have to move out of there. And so, we want to...the Housing Trust Fund is really geared towards permanent housing, and it's a real strategic priority. So, what I'm going to get into here is how the distribution isn't favorable or isn't ideal from the Housing Trust Fund, from Commerce's perspective. We funded 15 projects. Sorry for the small list. But there were a really limited number of organizations that could be geared for this. And there were some communities that were geared and had sourced resources, that they were ready to commit to this. A lot of them used ARPA funding to provide a match. And so, in Seattle, for instance, we were able to do a two-to-one match, or one-to-one match. So, we covered 50% of the project. They covered the other 50%. But the distribution, we had three projects in rural, we had five projects in urban. But as you can see, a significant share of the funds went to King County, which were geared up for this. Seattle hired a broker to help solicit and look for properties. They had a number of nearly finished new residential buildings that the owners elected to sell before going to market. And so, there was a very strategic opportunity caused by the pandemic. We anticipate that wave may have passed. But I'd say we bought five or...at least five or six newly constructed buildings that provide permanent housing right out the gate. So, you see that we don't have the ideal geographic distribution by urban, rural, and king. We also surely didn't get it regionally across the state. There was one application, as I mentioned, in Spokane. There were no other applications east of the Cascades. And I say a hand raised, so I'd like to yield the floor and ask you.
Yeah, thanks, Nate. Just a quick question. I'm wondering if you've got any numbers in terms of the average per-unit cost of these units that you guys have acquired?
Yes, indeed. Two more slides, and we'll get right to it. So, I wanted to highlight, as I said, permanent housing is a really big priority for us. We didn't know what we'd be able to get. This is the first time that this program had been in existence. And over 50% of the properties that we were able to purchase were for permanent housing. A lot of the shelters, so a number of the hotels that were purchased, people are looking at making a second investment in the next few years to convert them to permanent housing. But we were able to purchase and... Pardon my...90% of a project, but it was varying between 50 and 90%. You know, where communities didn't have a lot of match. We had a match requirement for phase one, but phase two, we didn't have a match requirement. It was a component of the funding. You know, if communities could have a match, that's great. We wanted to leverage it, especially if they have the means to do it. So, as I mentioned, we moved pretty fast. So, we moved pretty fast. So, an organization has to do their due diligence and move to contracting within 90 days. I want to highlight what's on your radar, make sure that we are fully aware and cognizant of what's happening. Concurrent with this, we did our traditional funding round. And we received 84 requests for funding, of which we were able to fund 30 due to the incredible competition and demand for funding that's available. These were the projects that applied to us this year in the traditional round. And we were able to fund the first two, Mirabou Townhomes and Bets on North Lacey. Mirabou Townhomes had already received a tax credit allocation, so it had funding and it was sitting there, ready to go. And so, it was a priority. When we make determinations, we're looking at the populations being served. We're looking at local priorities and local stakeholders. We weren't able to get to the next two, but we really felt like they had really strong justification. But because we had limitations on funding, we had to put them in a waitlist. And waitlists are going to directly tie to what's happening in the legislature, in the 2022 legislature, that I'll share some additional slides about. But then, there were three that we declined. Oftentimes, we always provide technical assistance to the applicants to talk through what we've done to improve. And very, very often, applicants come in two or three times before they get the funding. It's really about pipeline considerations and it's just not wide enough in order to get more projects through. Not to...so, but I'd like to pause here before we talk maybe about the complexity and what's happening with Rapid Capital in the 2022 session.
I would like to...before you go, Councilmember Caskart, I would ask if Eric Finch has any questions? And I don't see everybody on the video. So, Eric, if you're there, do you have any questions for Mr. Lichty?
Well, and thank you, Nate, for joining. You know, and again, we have been tracking in terms of, I think, the normal housing request process. I think part of it was a timing issue with last year. And again, we just did not have one of the community providers that was, I think, ended up well enough with the right steps. They just would have not been able to be able to activate something in that 45-day period, you know, to kind of close all the loops. And so, it was a missed opportunity. But I think often sadly, what portrayed in the press is that the city didn't do it well. There was active discussions and those things going on. It just unfortunately did not mature in the timeframe necessary. So, I guess to that, I think, point, Nate, it's like, you know, how can we help lean forward? Because I know one of the things that I've been working on with the county as well is how do we pre-vet some of these projects and pieces of ground, you know, or the real estate? You mentioned the real estate brokerage. So, what are those things that potentially you're seeing across the state that we might want to look at as best practices here to kind of help us, I think, be able to kind of, I think, I guess, more in a sense, pre-qualify or extend our reach as it relates to builders that can help us activate these projects?
Great question, Eric. And I'll probably take a little bit of time to answer that, because it's really going to depend. The legislature, the governor, the Senate, and the House each proposed three different variations of Rapid. So, if I may proceed and come back to you, okay? So, the supplemental session is putting...
Councilmember Caskart did have a question, too, so I didn't want to...
Yeah, he did. And did you want to go ahead then, or do you want to wait till we're...
Yeah, just real quick. And if you're going to answer this later, then I'll wait. But I'm just wondering, to what extent are you guys, the Department of Commerce, interacting with other agencies, the Code Council, the legislature, and others to try and find ways to get these per-unit costs down? Because I feel like 222,000 average for a single unit just a couple of years ago would have bought you an entire house with a yard and everything else in Spokane. And yeah, it's a little bit inflated above that. The market certainly has driven those costs up, but the actual real costs still aren't that much higher. So, I'm just kind of wondering, are you guys looking at that? Because, you know, if we've got 500 individuals that we're trying to house, that's $110 million, and it's just not a sustainable option. So, I'm just kind of curious, are you guys working on trying to get those per-unit costs down, prioritizing projects that have lower per-unit costs?
Yeah, I think there are, you know, across Commerce, across a lot of agencies, there is strategic initiatives to try to address those costs. The construction, the material inflation costs this year alone have just really caused the sector a major heartache. So, you know, I kind of feel like I'm kind of just trying to balance in the sea, right? I'm trying to keep it down. And what we try to do in the trust fund is encourage competition in order to get, you know, the most cost-effective, the highest return on investment and leveraging resources, so that the state's investment is always a share of it. But I...so, I totally appreciate that. Increasing production, more broad scale, is also a very important initiative. But I also look at if we wait, you know, the inflationary costs are going to continue. So, I personally am not an expert in that, but there are a lot of good discussions going on. Thanks for the question. So, the legislature said...I'm glad you maybe had a second to look at this slide. So, the governor proposed...their budgets range from...I have the specific numbers, from 300 million to 400 million for Rapid Capital Housing acquisition. And then, there are proposals for 100 million for the Traditional Housing Trust Fund. I'm just going to flashback to this. These are the projects that are on your waitlist for the Traditional Housing Trust Fund. And 100 million in supplemental funding is not going to help us get these projects moving. This version has a lot of...so, if the governor's budget goes, there's going to be largest portion for acquisition of hotels, motels, vacant or newly constructed apartment buildings. And so, that would be the area that your team would probably want to be very focused. They do have...the governor's budget included a real focus on permanent supportive housing, which allows for new construction. And we supplied in our decision packet, so our budget request was 137 million to do regional distribution of PSH, regional production of PSH, to work hand-in-hand with the healthcare authority and the behavioral health sector to make sure that behavioral health services are aligned with the production of housing. So, this proposal included that. And so, I don't know these projects in detail that you have here, but increasing or expanding your pipeline of projects that have permanent supportive housing would be one of my second recommendations to align with the budgetary priorities. The Senate's version had roughly 300 million for permanent supportive housing. They allowed for new construction, and they had an allocation not specific to Spokane City. The housing portion then did another large portion for Rapid acquisition, which would produce, would allow for tiny home construction, but then a lot more hotel motel type acquisitions. And then, they funded permanent supportive housing through HB 1866. If you're tracking the ledge, that's Apple Health and Homes, which is a very focused initiative towards permanent supportive housing construction. So...
Nate?
Yeah?
I have a question. What do you consider rural? What is the definition of rural?
Generally, it's unconnected from a metro region, populations under 15,000. So, there are...I doubt...I don't know your geography well enough to say if there's any part of Spokane County that would meet our definition of rural.
I think there would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and in our traditional funding, the statutory requirement is for us to target 30% of funding for rural. That we are regularly achieving and hitting that. So, it depends on the language in the proviso as to whether or not Rapid Capital falls under kind of that governance requirement. Commerce supports it being a carve-out or specifically identified as a target. So, we're supportive of rural being carved out. Otherwise, I expect that they will take twice as long to do the same type of projects, right? They're just not going to have the inventory or the stock or some of the capacity to pursue some of these things. So, rural, something that Commerce has been very supportive of. What...when we discussed these budget options with our policy advisory team yesterday, so, we have a quarterly meeting with a policy advisory team that's made up of a lot of affordable housing experts, housing providers, and DSHS and so forth. And there was really strong emphasis that they really would like to see more funding to the traditional funding and away from Rapid. The budget is literally being written today and tomorrow and finalized next week. So, to the extent that Spokane has an interest in having a voice in that allocation, I highlight that because there are two projects on the waitlist that if traditional funding were bolstered, would have a great likelihood of advancing swiftly. Of course, new construction takes a little longer, but it's production in your community. So, I know that that probably wasn't your anticipated focus. So, but I know that Rapid is, and there's going to be all kinds of versions of Rapid. So, Eric, I tried to touch on what the priorities might be depending on the different ones, but if you want to unpack that further, by all means.
Yeah, and Lori, you can reel me in in terms of time. And certainly want to give space for the rest of the council members as well. I think it's just where I'm trying to develop, I think, I guess, that better best practice list in terms of, okay, here's what defines a good project, right? And so that we can, I think, more proactively start looking at, you know, there's already been, I think, groups that have looked at, you know, like the real estate that the city owns, right, or the county owns, you know, to figure out how to better leverage that. But, you know, I think the more we can, I think, identify what those, you know, good indicators of a qualifying project are and be able to kind of prepackage those. Because I'd rather hit you with a list of 10, right, and get five than hit you with a list of two and get one, right? And so, you know, I think in some ways, you know, I believe we're getting a hundred dollars, you know, a year increase for the $1,000 expense increase that we're getting, right? We're not keeping pace, let alone, you know, obviously, I think, you know, getting ahead of the problem. So, I think the only way I know how to do that is to be able to put more projects out there for consideration from whatever variety of sources, not assuming that, you know, the state commerce is going to be the only source. So, I'll stop there.
Yeah, you were listed...I saw the article a couple of weeks ago that Spokane housing prices...yeah, it's a very...
Off the charts, yeah. So, I'm going to pivot to Council President, then Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thanks, Nate, for being here. I had a question. I was meeting with a developer a week or so ago, who's a private developer, and they were of low income and affordable housing, and they partner with nonprofits. But they were saying, and I don't remember the exact issue, but there were some obstacles to getting Commerce money when a private developer was involved, even though they're serving the target audience. And I was wondering how much of that was internal versus legislative and what we could do to expand the... do to expand the pool of potential developers.
Yeah, uh, thanks for the question. Um, the, the statute, um, allows for, the tax credit world is geared and towards allowing and, and requiring, uh, for-profit or private investors to be, and they're incredible partner for us. Housing trust fund proviso has limitations on public entities, nonprofits, public housing authorities, tribal entities. Um, but there are a lot of good, uh, development consultants that are working with nonprofit partners. And there, we, we polled, um, our PAT members yesterday about what the barriers were that slow things up. Um, and they were identifying a lot, mostly external, uh, barriers. Um, the, the, when we have a broad, there, there are certainly frustrations, and we're working on, like, cleaning up our contract template to, to simplify things. Um, and there, but we're closing, you know, a hundred projects a year, um, and we're having a lot of them move through perfectly smoothly. So, uh, there are, there are some complaints that we get, um, for certain, and we're, we're responding to those requests. There are sta- there are a lot of sta- in our application, there are a lot of statutory requirements, so there are a lot of the things that people get frustrated by that, um, we're, we're trying to illuminate as, hey, if we clean up, uh, the RCW, um, then, you know, things could be even more simplified. Uh, but, yeah, I, I'm sensitive and I, I hear, I hear the, the concerns that those folks have. So there are statutory things that we probably need to partner on cleaning up.
And maybe let us know when you discover those, if we can help in any way. Uh, Council Member Wilkerson?
Well, Nate, nice to put a face to a name, finally, so welcome. I'm just gonna piggyback Council President Biggs, because when Catholic charities attempted our rapid rehousing, after that did not fly, we did have a broker look at, uh, hotel motels, and we just do not have those in our immediate region. So we are definitely looking at new construction, 'cause those are not an option to us at this time. So that cleanup will be a significant help to us, 'cause we don't have the ability to go the other route.
Certainly, yeah. I, we heard it, uh, we heard it loud and clear in our policy advisor team, uh, we've been trying to, uh, com- communicate that as much as possible.
Okay.
We think, we think that that acquisition window has, has kind of closed.
Uh, let's see, Council Member Stratton or Zatone or Bingle, do you have questions? Right, this was fascinating and illuminating. I learned a lot. I really appreciate this information, Nate, taking your time to come here and talk to us. And, um, Mr. Finch, do you have any additional questions before we move on?
Uh, no, and, and Nate, I can get with you offline, too. I, I think it just, you know, the, the more I can get educated, uh, even on the process, then, then I know the better I'll be able to support, you know, the, the region here.
Yeah, my, my, sorry, I didn't put my email address on the screen, I'll put it in the chat.
We know where to find you.
Oh, please do, uh, it's a, it's been a pleasure. I look forward to, I do look, I love, I love meeting with groups and, uh, look forward to actually doing a road, road tour and getting out to see folks.
Oh, good, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Appreciate it. We're gonna move on to our twenty-twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments, and I have on my agenda that it's Kara who is going to be leading this discussion, is that correct?
Yes, I'm going to start, and then two other planning staff members will finish today.
Okay, perfect, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Kara Praszewski with Planning Services. And Kevin is going to be operating the PowerPoint for me to date. So, um, we're looking at the applications for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two cycle of the comprehensive plan amendments. Today's process will involve looking briefly at a background, um, of the program. We'll go through staff presentation of all of the applications we've received and review the recommendation that came forward from the docketing committee, which met on February So as you review, the annual amendment program allows amendments once a year per RCW. All applications are considered separately, although we look at their impacts cumulatively. Cepa review is required for all applications that are accepted into the work program, so that would come later this year for those applications. Anyone can submit a proposal for these amendments. They can be to amend either, um, maps within the comprehensive plan or text or both. This year, we received five private applications as well as three city-sponsored proposals. And all of this information is always available on the webpage, um, for this year's cycle. Next, please. So to walk you through the timeline briefly, applications are due every year in October, so those five private applications came in last fall. Um, we had the ad hoc docketing committee, um, in, on February first. Next, um, full council will, um, set a resolution with the work program. We'll move into an agency comment period, which will last fourteen days. Um, following that, um, there'll be a public comment period, which lasts sixty days. During these times, um, Plan Commission does have, holds several workshops as well. Um, and then the next step you can move forward, Kevin, is the Plan Commission hearing, which typically takes place in August or September. Um, there will be a city council hearing on the recommendations that come forward, and finally, um, they're signed and go into effect at the end of the year. Also of note, um, through all of these steps where you see the speech bubbles appearing, these are opportunities for the public to comment, either in oral or written or, or both types of testimony. Um, the threshold determination, all neighborhood councils and community assembly representatives receive notice as well as a request for any comments. We have received at this far, uh, at this point in the process, one comment, which was forwarded to the committee. Um, process requirements are set, set through FMC. The docketing committee made a recommendation on each of the applications they heard, and this will help inform city council adopting the resolution for the work program. So there are seven thresholds, um, for council to consider when reviewing these applications. The first is that the amendment is appropriately addressed through the comprehensive plan. Second, that the proposed change is not already addressed by an ongoing work program or by a sub-area or neighborhood planning process. The third is that the change can be reasonably reviewed within the resources of this annual Fourth, that, um, any expansion to the applications, and we do have a number of those we're reviewing today, any expansion needs to consider nearby similarly situated properties and limit the expansion only to those similarly situated properties. Um, fifth, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive Um, next, please. Sixth, that, uh, the proposed amendment is not the same or substantially similar to, um, a proposal that was not accepted in the previous year, and we can tell you that none of the applications this year qualify in that way. Um, and finally, it's important to consider if an amendment has been directed by state law or the decision of court. Again, none of this year's applications, um, meet that criteria. So all, uh, all five of the private applications received this year regard LU one, the land use plan map designation and, uh, zoning, official zoning designation. Um, they're all relating to chapter three, land use. And, um, that, of course, is always available at shapingspokane.org for those who wish to review it. At this point, um, I'm going to step away and hand it off to Kevin to review the individual application.
Thanks, Kara. Sorry for the, for the swapping, folks. Unfortunately, Kara has to leave, uh, at eleven forty today, so I'm happy to, to take over. Um, the, uh, the private applications that we've received, you can see, see in a general map here, there are five of them, they're kind of spread throughout the city. Um, and then the table at the right, which is also on the website for anyone who wants to see it, just gives you a summary of the ones that we're gonna go over today. We're gonna go over these pretty quickly. Um, you've all received a information packet with some of the more, uh, more cogent details, and we're, of course, happy to answer any questions if you have any, so. Um, helps if I have selected the right window, there we go. So the first one is application, uh, you'll notice for the new council members, all of these have a file number, that's just how we track to make sure we keep these separate, but we, 'cause they all go at the same time. So this one is file number Z two one two eighty C O M P. Uh, it's two properties on Cora Avenue. This is kind of at the north end and east of the North Monroe, uh, corridor. So we're looking at two parcels of just, uh, just under nineteen acres. Uh, currently, you can see on this aerial that it contains the Faith Bible Church. Um, the, uh, the proposal, um, isn't to ne- the, the applicant has not stated their intent to, to, to change the, the church, they're more, uh, interested in the properties around it. You can see that it does have quite a bit of undeveloped property. So their existing land use plan map designation is residential four to ten units an acre, that's our lowest density residential. Uh, and they'd like to bring that up to residential fifteen to thirty units per acre. And you can kind of see on the map here that to the west, there is, um, I'm gonna get my fake little laser pointer here, to the west, there's some residential fifteen to thirty, to the east, there's some higher density residential, so they're kind of bracketed, they wanna be, uh, the same as their neighbors. Uh, with that land use plan map designation would come a new zoning, the current zoning is residential single family. The proposal would be for residential multifamily with a fifty-five-foot height limit. Uh, the, the, uh, specific policy in the comprehensive plan, the location policy for higher density residential, residential uses is policy LU one point four, which, like many of our higher density policies, calls for these kinds of uses to be directed towards centers and corridors. However, there is some language in there that allows infill outside of that, uh, the, the vicinity of centers and corridors. So this will be the policy that we'll look at, uh, as staff when we, if this is, if this moves forward, when developing the staff report and, and recommendations. Uh, just to give you some context, uh, this green hashed area to the west, that is the core of the Monroe corridor, the north end of the Monroe corridor, and then all this general commercial, this red color you see on the east side, that is Division. Um, Division isn't a designated corridor, but it does, it is pretty much general commercial for its full length in this area. Also, this one, uh, the docketing committee discussed two possible expansions. The first one is to the west, you'll notice to the west, this is the, this is the apartment buildings to the west of the subject property, and there's a thirty-foot strip of basically what is a leftover artifact of previous zoning actions, um, of this little single-family thirty, the, the, single-family zone is about thirty feet wide. If this proposal were to be approved, what we would end up with is multifamily, multifamily with a little unbuildable strip of thirty foot, thirty feet between them of single family. And so the discussion was to include that thirty-foot strip in the proposal. Uh, it would add about point one acres, point one six acres to the total of the, of the, uh, proposal, and it affects one property. And as you can see, it's, uh, currently an apartment building, and actually what they have in that strip is a, is a shelter, uh, uh, covered parking. Then on the east side, the committee also asked about this, there's a, kind of an odd little shape to the east side of this parcel, and you can see here that the, the parcel to the east bordered in yellow has a small little area of single-family in it, kind of similar to the first one. The docketing committee's recommendation was for staff to provide some input on this, not just to say we wanna add it, but to have staff look at it. We've kind of looked at it, and it's, again, an odd little artifact, um, it leftover from previous zoning actions, and there used to be a, um, a street through this area that was vacated, and it's kind of like a leftover piece of that. But because this is such a small portion, it's not full depth of the property, um, really, uh, staff's recommendation or staff's input at this time is it, it's probably not worth including this at this point. Um, maybe a future effort could look at kind of the alignment here of, of this street, but, um, for now, it's probably not worth the work to, to fix this very small little thing. Um, however, that's obviously up to you, the resolution that, that'll come forward will include this parcel, you can decide if you wanna include it or not. Um, and it's, it's point zero seven acres, it's a very small piece of land. Uh, so that's the first one. Are there any questions on two eighty before I move on to the next one?
We can't see everybody, so chime in if you have a question.
Hey Laurie, it's Kara.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to let everybody know that the, um, developers have been in the area and have met with, um, both the North Hill Neighborhood Council and the, or the Emerson Garfield as well. So, um, they've been out and about, this isn't a surprise, this won't be a surprise to any of the neighbors.
Good to know, thank you.
This one is in North Hill, but the boundary to Emerson Garfield is Cora Avenue, so all of our requirements will be that they notify both.
Right.
It's great to hear they've been out.
Yep.
So moving on to the second one, uh, that would be, these are all sequential for the private applications, we try to do that on purpose. Uh, so this next one is two eight one, it's file two eight one. This is on, uh, South Freya Street, this is over by, um, the Fred Meyer and just south of the, of Interstate ninety, just to kind of give you an idea what we're talking about. Um, in fact, this is the Wake Up Call Coffee, if you're like me and you've hit this one before for, for a little bit of caffeine. This is the property immediately to the south, it's one property of point three acres. It used to contain a home, but that home was demolished under permit, uh, a few years ago, so it's, it's currently a vacant lot. Um, and behind it, it's not easy to see without parcel lines on here, but behind it is a city alleyway. So the proposal would be to go from residential ten to twenty, uh, that's ten to twenty units per acre, and to bring it into the general commercial to match what's to the north of it. Um, as you'll recall, that, that Thor Freya couplet area kind of has some commercial between it north of here, this would add into that. Um, the zoning, of course, would go from residential two-family or duplex zoning, um, to, to match what is north of it, which is community business, with a fifty-five-foot height limit. Uh, the, the goal, the policy for this one, of course, is LU one point eight, which directs the city as to where general commercial uses should be allowed. The land use is general commercial, but the zoning is community business, that zoning is allowed within that land use. So, we look at LU one point eight, which, again, directs things to centers and corridors, but LU one point eight does include some language that would allow us to consider putting general commercial outside of a center or a corridor. So obviously, the, uh, workshops with Plan Commission and staff analysis would be looking at this further if this moves forward. The committee also looked at this one and considered, uh, and recommended some additional properties, um, uh, to be included in the application, you can see them bordered here in yellow. Fifth Avenue going east to west is a collector, not an arterial, but it is a collector. Um, Farrell Street, just as important to note, is a dead end, uh, so as you go, or is a cul-de-sac further south so that it doesn't interact with, um, with Freya Street negatively. So we're, we're talking about what is currently homes on a, um, on a stub street that doesn't go through. So the possible expansion area, you can see the original application is only point three acres, the expansion would add one point three acres to this proposal. Um, it's eight additional, whoops, eight additional parcels, um, and actually, there is a home on this east parcel that isn't showing up on the aerial, so we are looking at eight parcels with eight homes on them. Um, obviously, none of these, none of these property owners have come forward and said, I wanna redevelop. Um, this is more of a, a consideration of these parcels are nearby and in the same situation as, uh, as the, the private application was. So, any questions on two eight one before I move on? Okay, not hearing anybody, feel free to stop me if you need to. Two eight two, we are now further, uh, south on the South Hill, this is in the, um, Lincoln Heights neighborhood, just off of Southeast Boulevard. It's a single property of three point eight acres, undeveloped land currently. Um, just to orient you, this is that, uh, Park and Ride that STA owns and operates on Southeast Boulevard, so we're talking just west across the street, um, and just south of the, the alignment of Thirtieth Avenue. I'm not sure if this has been built yet, but it is, it is a right-of-way for the city, so it will be. Um, what they are seeking to do is to amend their land use from residential four to ten and bring it up to residential fifteen to thirty units per acre, and their zoning would also change from residential single family to residential multifamily. Uh, the, again, the policy for this one is LU one point four, directing these kinds of higher density uses to, generally to centers and corridors. And in this case, what we have is, um, this is the application here on the lower left, and all of this green hash, this is the Lincoln Heights Center. It's a district center, it's, it's been through two neighborhood planning, uh, two, new two planning actions, um, and you can see how this is immediately catty-cornered across from the core, um, there's quite a There's quite a little bit of other R M F around it. So, this is similar in situation to that. Also, on this figure, and we'll come back to it, the next application is also similarly situated, it's just to the north here. So, that's what you see that other one near. Also, during the committee meeting, the committee recommended that staff approach S T A about the parcel to the east to determine if they would be willing to be part of this, if they wanted to be included. We have since reached out to S T A and they said, fine, if you want to increase our density to R M F, that's fine. They have no intention of abandoning the site. They're going to continue to use it for now as a park and ride, but they had no problem with being included. So, that would take our original application of three point eight acres and add another two point two to it. And it's a, theirs is a single parcel as well. So, that would make it two parcels. Any questions on two eight two before I go on? Okay. So, for two eight three, I'm going to hand it off to Casey Downey, who is a new in our office, but she's not new to planning. And she's going to take it away. I'll be here for questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin, and good afternoon, council members. Kevin already did my introduction. My name is Casey Downey. I'm happy to be presenting before you today. So, the next application is Z twenty-one dash two eight three comp located at twenty-six twenty-one and twenty-six twenty-three East Twenty-seventh Avenue. This is an existing duplex located in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. Next slide. The applicant has requested a change in land use from residential ten to twenty to essentially the next level in density of residential fifteen to thirty. And here, you can see the property currently abuts that residential fifteen to thirty. The applicant filed a concurrent rezone along with the land use designation going from R T F or residential two family to R M F or residential multifamily. Again, the property abuts existing R M F zoning. And next, the primary comp plan policy staff will be reviewing is L U one point four if this application moves forward. L U one point four calls for the higher density residential uses to be directed towards the designated centers and corridors. And as we previously saw, this property is located near the designated Lincoln Heights Center Core, pretty much behind the Safeway in the area to give some context. So, it does seem to meet L U one point four, though staff has not completed a full review. During their meeting, the docketing subcommittee recommended expanding the land use change to include four additional properties directly to the west of the applicant's property. The expansion was proposed to avoid leaving those four properties in a sort of land use island as there's no other ten to twenty designated properties in the area. All four properties currently contain duplexes and they are similarly situated, seeming to meet the standards of the S M C requirements for expansion. But if the expansion is not found appropriate by council, the original application can still be considered on its own. And if you have any questions for this project, if not, we can move on to the next.
Casey?
Yes.
Where is that in conjunction to Thornton Murphy Park? Is that across the street?
Uh, Kevin may be able to answer that one for me.
It's to the east.
Yeah.
Let's see, so just keep going down Twenty-seventh and you see the South Side senior? And it's see it right there. Okay, got it, got it. Thanks.
Okay. So, the next application is Z twenty-one dash two eighty-four comp. This one is located at eight zero one West Francis Avenue in the North Hill area. The imagery here shows residential dwellings on the property, but those have been demolished since the aerial map was last updated. The property is currently under construction for a new commercial use. So, there are no residential uses being impacted by this proposal. The request is to expand the existing office land use designation to encompass the full property. As you can see in the image, the south tail of the property is currently designated with the residential four to ten land use. Similarly, the applicant is also filing for a rezone concurrently with the land use designation map change going from R S F or residential single family to that O R thirty-five, which is office retail with the thirty-five foot height limit to, again, match the larger portion of the property. The primary comp plan policy staff will review if this application moves forward is L U one point five, which gives direction on where office uses should be located. L U one point five directs office uses towards centers and corridors. Now, there is no center or corridor in this area. However, there is an exception specific to Francis Avenue between Cannon Street and Market Street, which this property is located between. The policy does recommend the office land use not to be any further than one hundred and forty feet from Francis. But that is what we seek, what caused that kind of split land use because it's currently at that one hundred and forty feet. So, the proposal would be expanding that. Clearly, not all lots are one hundred and forty feet deep, which is where we see the potential ability to expand the designation to follow the actual property lines. But again, this would be something that staff would be further researching to determine the appropriateness of. And then, on the next slide, during their meeting, the docketing subcommittee did recommend expanding the land use change to include two other properties to the west and then one to the east. The expansion would resolve another split land use property, that's the one farthest other side from the pointer, incorporate an existing parking lot, and then better line up a land use designation to avoid that center parcel from essentially being sandwiched between two office uses without the same ability to develop. Again, if the expansion is not found appropriate by council, the original application can still be considered. And if we have any questions on this one, otherwise, we can move back to Kevin.
Any questions, council? We're good. Go ahead, Kevin.
All right. Almost there. So, we've got the three city sponsor proposals done, or I mean, left to go. So, the first one, you've, some of you have seen this before. We quite often have minor amendments to make to map T R five, which is the Bike Network map in chapter four of the comprehensive plan. This is this year's suite of changes that have been worked out with various local groups and with Integrated Capital Management and Mr. Quinn Hurst in our office, who's our bike ped guy. And so, this year, we're looking at eleven changes to existing routes plus three new routes. You can kind of see the map here and we'll provide, you know, if this moves forward, we'll provide much more detail as to what these changes would be, but you can see they are quite a bit spread throughout the city. Some of these down thirteen and fourteen specifically are related to the U S one ninety-five study that was completed and the recommendations from that. And then, number five is related to the Fish Lake Connection, Fish Lake Trail Connection work that Integrated Capital Management has been doing. So, quite a few little minor changes throughout the city. The, the next city sponsor proposal is amendments to map T R twelve, which is the arterial network map. We've seen these kind of changes before, but not, not last year. Currently, Integrated Capital Management's working on refining and finalizing that list. So, we'll make sure that the packet for the resolution includes the most up-to-date information. But it's about fourteen changes. Again, some of them are related to the U S one ninety-five study. Some of them are corrections. And then, there's some other recommendations that have come from other efforts that are in the list. Also, this one does include a text amendment, a proposed text amendment to chapter four. Not a policy change, but chapter four, you'll recall, the transportation chapter does include certain lists of specific projects, future projects that need to happen, and those need to be updated if we add or subtract projects. So, the, for instance, the U S one ninety-five study added some recommended projects. This would put them in the text of the chapter to say, you know, these projects are ones we might want to fund in the near future. That's the text amendment. And so, we'll make sure to get up-to-date language on that as well. So, um-
Um, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
Lori, council, I would urge everybody when we get a final on this to really go over it carefully because in the past, there've been some things that have come up and we get notified by our citizens saying, you can't do this. So, and we've been caught by surprise. So, please go over this carefully. And if you have questions, you know how to contact Kevin. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you. And yes, we'll, we'll get you the details again as soon as we can. The last city sponsor proposal, I'm going to go ahead and hand this off to Director Spencer Gardner. He's, he's waiting in the wings, I think, to present this one to you, so.
Hello. Thank you, Kevin. I hope at this point, I don't need to introduce myself, but I guess for viewers or those who may not be familiar, I'm Spencer Gardner, Planning Director. This is a slightly different type of proposal than the other ones that you've heard. This is actually a motion by Plan Commission. And you can see the language of the motion here. Plan Commission proposes to City Council to initiate a review of comprehensive plan policies, L U one point three and L U one point four, to facilitate an increase in housing options in the city's residential zones. So, that is the motion that Plan Commission put forward. If you go to the next slide, Kevin, we can actually see what those, those two policies are. The first pertains to single-family residential areas and the second pertains to higher density residential uses. So, there are, we did send a memorandum that you should have received yesterday and that includes some more detail around the, the motion that was passed by Plan Commission. So, this is something for you to consider as well as you're considering these, all of these proposed amendments for this upcoming work plan. And I think we can open it up for discussion.
Questions for Spencer? I can't see you all. Could you stop sharing and then we could see everybody? Great. We have council president and then council member Cathcart. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the best person to answer this is, but a few, a few sessions ago, we were with planning staff and I talked about, I think some others did, changing the density, residential density in most single-family zones from four to ten to ten to twenty, excluding the agricultural residential and perhaps some other targeted zones that have special things going on. And I guess my question is, would we be able to do this under the canopy of this discussion? Or should we add that as a independent process to this?
The, the motion as advanced by Plan Commission, I think, leaves some uncertainty about exactly how, how deep this, you know, proposed review would go. And so, it, it may be, I, I think the conversation about exactly what this entails could be probably a more complicated discussion than all of the other proposals that you've heard today. So, one option that you have before you that would, that would prevent the other things from being held up is essentially removing this out of the, this amendment cycle. And then, we could continue that discussion as, as part of the, I guess, the annual work plan outside of these specific amendments, the other amendments that you've heard today.
But I guess my question is if we did that, we couldn't make that change until fall of twenty twenty-three? Is that the impact of that procedurally?
Tyrrell may be better positioned to answer that question. My understanding is that it does not necessarily require us to wait until twenty twenty-three, but I don't, I don't want to guarantee that.
Hi, Tyrrell Black, also in planning. We, the council does have some discretion with comprehensive plan amendments. And one of those options is to declare this an emergency and then you can review it outside of the regular amendment process. And Mr. Richmond's on the call too. So, we can, we could dive more into that, but maybe this would be a good topic at a subsequent meeting. What you're talking about, the density change, is an addition to the scope of looking at L U one point three and L U one point four. As I, I, the ten to twenty designation is now currently what we have under the residential two family zoning category. So, we have the, the density is very cooked into our land use policies. So, it wouldn't be just one policy, I believe. It would be really looking at the whole chapter three. We do have the timing issue of we need to do a periodic update, which we also haven't scoped as a city, and that is due in twenty twenty-six. It looks like we may receive some legislative funding, all, all cities in the state for updating with the, the housing element. So, there's a lot of different parts to this. And maybe that answered some of the question.
Tyrrell, also add, it also is going to require staff time. So, this doesn't just happen by itself and that has to be a consideration.
Yes, that is our, our major concern in, in how to, how to staff this. And that, of course, interplays with the scope question. And also, it will take community time, Plan Commission time and council time to, to work on this item.
Okay. Let's go on to council member Cathcart, then council member Stratton.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to add, I, I don't think we can afford to wait. I think this is something that we absolutely must start. I mean, we should have started it already, frankly, but, but I think we need to get going on it because we've got to update these densities. We've got to update allowable attached housing. I mean, there's a lot of things that have to happen. And if it requires an emergency ordinance, I'm still fully supportive of doing that. I know there were four of us who agreed to do something on an emergency basis a year ago and, and that's at least the same, if not more so now. So, I, I really think that, that there's an opportunity here and we need to take advantage. And if it's going to require some additional cost for planning, then we've got ARPA funds, both allocated and unallocated, that we could look at, at using. But we can't just keep, you know, kicking the can. So, if there's an opportunity to jump on this now, I, thousand percent, let's do it.
Council member Stratton.
So, what is the definition of incompatible land uses? What does that mean? Where it talks about the, protecting the neighborhoods from the intrusion of incompatible land uses.
Somebody from planning would need to answer that. Don't talk to me when it was.
Sorry. I was just pulling up the language. Are you, are you, is that in the policy language?
It's in the policy language. I'm not sure it has a, a super clear definition. I mean, we have things that in single-family zones, we do not allow. So, like heavy manufacturing is not allowed, to pick a more extreme example. And then, we have some things that are allowed by conditional use in the zoning code, such as schools and churches. Those are, are found to be compatible, so.
So, what about duplexes, apartments, cottages, condos? Would those not be under this, would those not be allowed in neighborhoods? It would just be centers and corridors?
We do allow cottage development in residential single-family. We do allow townhomes in residential single-family. So, again, those are already defined in the code.
Okay.
There is some mention of duplexes in the comp plan in the single-family category, but apartments are described in the residential high-density categories.
Okay. Council president.
I have two, so I have a question and then a point. So, the question is, in terms of this application from the Plan Commission, would, would it be appropriate scoping-wise if we put in language defining incompatible uses as not including duplexes and apartments as long as it met the same design standards and height standards? Is that, is that the sort of thing that would be part of that process? Or, or again, does that take a different application to do that? And then, I'll, I'll save my other one for a second.
I think you could take this suggestion from the Plan Commission and craft it into what you would like. And if that would be one of the goals is to examine allowing more types of like duplexes, triplexes, maybe fourplexes specifically called out in the policy, that would be possible. As you know, I, I wanted to clarify too, that emergency just takes it out of the comp plan amendment cycle. It doesn't necessarily mean that the public discussion happens super fast. So, this is a, a big discussion item of very high importance to many members of the community and there's a lot of opinion, so. But yes, we could definitely work on the scoping to be specific to look at, at single-family. Maybe there's another policy needed for another type of zoning category that we don't really have now.
And, uh, council president? And, Council President, when you get back, I can share with you what Tacoma is doing, because that is what Tyrell is talking about, what's yet another type of, of zone, so that we're kind of, you know, splitting the baby, as it were.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, so that's great, and I've looked a little bit at Tacoma, but I would love to talk with you and others about that, since they're a little farther ahead of us on that. I guess my request, not to belabor it today, but if either James and/or Planning Staff could get to me just a, a brief explanation of if we really wanted to substantially change the density of most single-family residential from four to ten to ten to twenty, what would be the options for that process? Because like Councilmember Cathcart, I think there's an urgency to it. So, you know, we may or may not have the votes to do it and proceed, so that's fine, but it'd be great to have the options, so those of us with that urgency can at least know how to do it, since you all are much more knowledgeable about this. So if someone could just get those options, because we're getting close to creating a work plan for these comp amendments considerations, and I don't want to get too far behind on that if we want to add something like that, and totally understanding staff resources, money, all that, so don't, don't want to belittle that, totally understand that. But it is, to me, it seems like a real critical issue of what those densities are, and what the minimum lot sizes are, things like that. But I'll stop laboring it, so thank you.
That, that's good, okay. So before, Councilmember Cathcart, before you go, I noticed that Mr. Richmond was going flashing. Did you want to say something?
Oh, no, I was just unmuted in case there was a question.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to say, okay.
I'm sorry.
So let's have Mr. Cathcart then, Mr. Bingle.
Yeah, just two things. One is, one of the ideas that I'd brought forward, I think, last year during our work plan discussion, was looking at, you know, all of our allowable densities across the city and see if there are, you know, differing levels, rather than just a single density that we would want to, to apply to, say, a single-family or, or, you know, whatever the, the zoning may end up being. And, and I'm certainly still open to that concept, although I, I would certainly support what Council President just brought up, because it, it really is important. And if that's sort of a simple solution, maybe a more expedited one, then I think that that would make a ton of sense, and I'd be supportive of it. But the other piece, and the Council President mentioned this, too, is that we also have to look at, I think, is that minimum lot size. And I know that that's being discussed right now with some of the, the code amendments coming forward, but I think that that will have to be part of the consideration, because to get the density, the allowable densities, if we do increase it, we've got to be able to build some smaller footprints, which is, you know, creating something that's a little bit smaller, a little bit more affordable for, for, you know, starter families or, or for, you know, folks who are downsizing. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's a big benefit across the board to do it.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, still pretty new to, to this entire process, but I hear what I think are a lot of really good ideas, and I would support any procedural steps to, to move this along and move it as quickly as possible, because I, you know, we all recognize how important this issue is in getting more housing built, and so, you know, I would, I would love to, to come alongside many others and, and join in this, so...
Okay, we can't vote on anything today, because we're not in a legislative session. However, we can move the comp plan amendments forward that the docketing committee has recommended and the Bicycle Advisory Board, and then I can act as a facilitator to get this process moving, that the Plan Commission has already begun, meet with Council President and anybody else who's interested in doing that. And, and so if we separate those, we'll get these, we'll get things moving a little faster, is I guess what I'm saying. And I, Kevin, do you concur, and Tyrell? Okay.
Yeah, what, what we could do, or what you could do is similar to what we did last year, where one of the applications was pulled out of the annual amendment cycle and then developed into something else. And so we would, we would draft that resolution for you to consider in that same way. It would say, "This proposal is recommended to be pulled out of the work program, and this is what will happen to it." And that way, the, the private applications and the other map amendments can go forward separate from that process.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Councilmember Wilkerson, you look like you're going to speak? Nope? Okay.
No, uh, but I'm on board, so...
Okay, she's on board, okay. Excellent. Anything else for the good of the order? And I just want to thank Spencer again for, welcome, that you're now our Planning Director, appreciate your input and guiding us through this process, so look forward to working with you a lot, actually. Next meeting is going to be March 7th on Monday, and until then, everybody have a great weekend. It's supposed to be nice, get out there and start raking leaves, and we'll see you in a couple of days. Thanks, all.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good day.